Welcome to the 12th Regular Meeting of the City Council and Clerk Vol. Call.
Councilwoman Biden.
Present.
President, Councilwoman Cato.
Present.
President, Councilwoman Capano, absent, Councilperson Chakoudas. President, Councilwoman Palucci.
Present.
President, Councilwoman Freiten.
Present.
President, Councilwoman Sehna.
Present.
President, Councilwoman Ford, absent, Councilwoman Lozey. President, Councilwoman Neff.
Present.
President, Councilwoman Trahan.
Present.
President, non-president.
If we could all rise for a moment of silence followed by a pledge of allegiance. I'd just like to reference the fact that Councilwoman Capano is in New York right now. Ongoing negotiations with the general electorate on behalf of the House 201. He was expected to be back, but they had a long negotiation, so he's not available today. Mr. President, a special prayer today on avoid families, you may avoid tasks. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation, on the God, in the visual liberty and justice of all. Do I have a motion to accept the yes, or would you claim the motion is debated? Seconded and discussed, all those in favor say aye. Do I have a motion to have it? Do I have a motion to suspend the rules to office late sessions? Motion is debated, seconded, all those in favor say aye. All the ayes have it. I would like to invite a Councilor large, Congressman Lozey, and Madam Mayor to preside over the presentation of some citations to some very worthy young men.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Sorry, I had to adjust the microphone slightly. I just would like to offer on behalf of the City of Lynn, our sincerest congratulations to the St. Mary's baseball team, Division III championship. When you make St. Mary's proud, you make the city proud, so congratulations once again.
At this time, we'd like to invite the coaches up.
I'd just like to say that I've coached a few of these young men on the team, and I didn't get to watch any of your games, but I read with great interest every story. I just chuckled and enjoyed the ride from the viewership. You guys did a great job, and it was just wonderful to see how you went about it. Thanks.
Not only is Derek Dana the coach of the Division III champions, he was also named the Boston Globes Coach of the Year.
Andrew Bellevue is in Florida with his family. Some of these guys have plans to take off, so did a great job for us seeing Andrew Bellevue. Julian Van Hennessy. Matthew Cusanza also has a tournament in New Jersey. He had a go-to, Matthew Cusanza Jr. Senior Kona Sakowicz. Another one who's in New Jersey in a baseball tournament, Antonio Felix Jr. Junior Donnie Weising. Senior Jack Wood. Senior Ryan Boaters. Sophomore Eric Pedro. Senior Clay Annapolis. Junior Cody Murtaugh. Junior Brady McLaughlin. Another senior, he had a family vacation planned, and actually put it off to play the state championship, and he had meanest feeling. Senior John Gator. Senior Jack Lennon. Junior Nick Bevere. Senior PJ Hatchell. Senior Brendan O'Neil. Senior Brett Lozey. Freshman Ryan Turin. And unfortunately, the rest of the coaching staff, Tim Vielen, Tom Donio, Don Stedman, Doug Mullins, and Brian Moby couldn't be here tonight. Thank you. We'll take a very brief recess to allow the parents and the players to welcome it out. One more talented young man you may have seen in the paper recently, and I'm going to turn it over to our resident coach, House Lieutenant Augustus Clark, for the presentation.
At this time, Justin Lewis from Lynn Tech has recognized as winning the New England High Jump, and he also just got back from the Nationals. So from Lynn, occasional tech, Justin, would you come up here, please?
Coach Hogan, would you come up also?
Coach Hogan didn't want to be recognized, but Coach Hogan has done a lot for this kid, and a lot of the other kids are on the track team, so I wanted to make sure that he was recognized also. He's done a great job.
Madam Mayor, do you want to do a citation for us?
So I just found out that the winning jump was six foot five inches. I figured that I could easily stand in as the bar and not worry about getting hurt in the least. Anyway, we do want to extend our most sincere congratulations to Justin Lewis for winning the New England High Jump Competition, and once again, another reason for Lynn to be so proud of its young people. Justin?
The Lynn City Council would also like to congratulate Justin, and has a citation for him. Thank you. Coach, get in here. Come on, Coach. We're going to proceed with the orders of the day with no objection. We're going to take some matters out of hand because we expect there to be some lengthy debate regarding the proposed FY16 city budget. So with that being said, we're open to a public hearing on the abandonment of a portion of Day Street. Over the public hearing, for those wishing to speak in favor, please state your name and your business address for the record, please, in twenty seconds.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, my name is Thomas McAdams, and attorney in Lynn with an address, with an address at Central Avenue. Day Street borders the northern side of Weston Greenery, across from the Lineway through the ocean, and it's laid out at seventy feet wide. Back in the nineties, Weston Greenery built a lot of silos on the portion of Day Street. There's eighty ten silos there, and when Goralek bought the, at that time it was Dean Foods, bought the Weston Greenery, they noticed that the silos were on part of the layout of Day Street, and they came in front of the City Council, and they asked the Council to abandon the strip of Day Street, and the Council voted to do that. For some reason, the order of abandonment never got signed, and also it's prerequisite to the abandonment of the public way or part of the public way in the planning of the building. So Goralek wants to build another silo in line with the ones that are already there which leads to that new Twenty-Fifth Street of Day Street, and they did the villagers in the scarpet, and said they were in the park and the park, and the fruition of the village. So we went to the planning of it all in tonight, made a agreement with him, we're back here and finished it all, and everybody in the city, I think, intended to be done fifteen years ago, it was definitely, and that'll be a turning point. Thank you, Attorney Holmes.
Thank you, Attorney Holmes. In all part of the, but it's not only to abandon Twenty-Fifth Strip, but to convey that Twenty-Fifth Strip, where all the funds are also, it's what the petition impolites. Thank you, Attorney Holmes.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, I'd like to let it to the record.
The Lynn-Linney Wood Health and Meeting this evening, and the quality action was taken in regards to the aforementioned motion by Stephen Upson, seconded by Fall Press, to recommend to the Lynn City Council that the abandonment of a portion of Day Street is shown on the plan of the amendment, the portion of Day Street Lynn has dated May twelve, twenty fifteen, is brought by Lynn Arch Engineering, is ready, is motion, Barrett, sincerely, Robert J. Still in jail.
Thank you, Madam. Clerk, I'm going to close the public hearing. For those wishing to speak in favor, open the public hearing. For those wishing to speak in opposition, opposition, opposition. Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing. For those wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing. What's the wish of the council? Approved. Motion made to approve, and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, go call.
Councilwoman Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Councilwoman Cato.
Yes.
Yes, Councilwoman Capano. Yes, Councilwoman Chakoudas. Yes, Councilwoman Palucci. Yes, Councilwoman Freiten. Yes, Councilwoman Sehna. Yes, Councilwoman Ford. Yes, Councilwoman Lozey. Yes, Councilwoman Neff.
Yes.
Yes, Councilwoman Trahan. Yes, yes.
Public hearing, petition, and carries cookies and candies, carries the right permission to install commercial appliances in a space not previously occupied as a kitchen at two seventy-one Weston Avenue, BR two, hours Monday through Friday, nine thirty a.m. to five thirty p.m., and Saturday, nine a.m. to two p.m.
Over the public hearing, for those wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing. For those wishing to speak in favor, I open the public hearing. For those wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing. For those wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing. Councilwoman Lozey.
Motion to approve. That is motion.
Made to approve, any discussion? Seeing none, go call.
Councilwoman Barton. Yes. Yes, Councilwoman Cato.
Yes.
Yes, Councilwoman Capano, absent, Councilwoman Chakoudas. Yes, Councilwoman Palucci. Yes, Councilwoman Freiten. Yes, Councilwoman Sehna. Yes, Councilwoman Ford. Yes, Councilwoman Lozey. Yes, Councilwoman Neff. Yes, yes, Councilwoman Capano. Yes, and yes.
Petition in Davis Market, but seeing the Sehna can sign permit at fifty-one Estes Street.
I open the public hearing, for those wishing to speak in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor? Seeing no one in favor, I close the public hearing, for those wishing to speak in favor? I open the public hearing, for those wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one in opposition, I close the public hearing. For those wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing. Councilwoman Sehna.
Motion to approve.
Motion made to approve, and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, go call.
Councilwoman Barton. Yes, Councilwoman Cato. Yes, Councilwoman Capano, absent, Councilwoman Chakoudas. Yes, Councilwoman Palucci. Yes, Councilwoman Freiten. Yes, Councilwoman Sehna. Yes, Councilwoman Ford. Yes, Councilwoman Lozey. Yes, Councilwoman Neff. Yes, yes, Councilwoman Trahan. Yes, and yes.
So we'll refer back to the intended public hearings. Madam Clerk, could Starbuck, before standing, the public hearing?
First, to whom do I address? This is a public hearing on fiscal, yes, sixteen, city of Lynn budget.
Now, over the public hearing, for those wishing to speak in favor, the chair recognizes. Madam Mayor, do you find Kelly? You may go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the City Council. Before you to speak in favor of the proposed FY16 budget, I know there has been a lot of discussions about the next school spending and whether we are meeting our obligations in our state mandate, funding our schools. I am possible to be a candidate, one of the available, is in fact available, and answer any questions you might have on that. As an overview of the budget and the budget process that I went through in arriving at the original, that ultimately begins with your desk, we are looking at a total fiscal year budget of about two hundred and ninety-two million dollars. Now, when I first thought about it, keeping in mind that it is always only as a last resort that I look to eliminating anybody's position when doing the budget. So what I did is I completely ignored the payroll section of the budget that was given to me, and focused instead on the expense side of the budget. The total non-salary, non-payroll expenditures for the city, as proposed to me in the draft version of the budget, was one hundred thirty-one million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars. From that, I subtracted out fixed costs, such as the payments into retirement, the VICA matches for employers, the health insurance costs to the city, debt payment obligations, and so forth. Those totaled out to be eighty million, two hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars in fixed expenses. So that left me a total of fifty-one million, four hundred and three thousand, five hundred and seventeen to work with in order to try to pare down all of the other departments so as to increase the funding of the fourth school department nearby, and that's closer to our next school spending obligation. On average, the gap at that time was a little over five billion dollars, so I looked to do ten to fifteen percent cuts on the expense side of all of the budgets that were submitted to me. We did make some changes that will save us some money in the long run. For example, all of the vehicles now that the City of Lynn is using in its fleets are being leased rather than purchased. It allows us to budget the fixed costs over the long run and save some money. They have also been centralized into one budget so that we can more easily rotate which vehicles are receiving vehicles of what type and when. You will notice that everybody's office supplies got cut. One of them, even General School President, I always laugh because he budgets nothing, but office supplies has moved this year. He decided to budget three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. He was cut to three sixty. Nobody's making the exact amount. We have also gone to leasing of computers, which again, we'll save us money in the long run. It's silly to buy computers in the same age. They become obsolete by the time we're into the purchase twice of them. We had to get rid of the computers that we have right now, and running like these Windows Seven, and Microsoft has even ended the tech support for the program that we are using right now in Lynn. This will bring us update with all of our computers. Anyway, as a result of cutting everything to come up with that five million dollars, we now have an education budget of around about one hundred and thirty-seven million dollars. This is getting us closer to the next school spending obligation as our one from the ESG that we're expecting of us. It's a long process. We have had the incredible influx of children into the schools over the last couple of years, and with every child that comes into the schools, our next spending level usually shows up. So while we have taken all of our new road in tax revenue and applied to the schools, it still does not keep in place with the, just the incredible levels of children who are coming in. I want to thank Karen publicly for all the hard work she's been doing with us with me. We are scheduled to meet with the Lieutenant Governor next week to see if we can perhaps use some of the extraordinary expenditures that we have applied to the schools in the last couple of years in the act of our next school spending. For example, the elementary school, for the Marshall Middle School building, was not accounted for school spending. These ability studies that have been done for Marshall, and most recently transferred money to Hickory, are not accounted for next school spending, and these are expenditures that we need especially now with all of the new children coming in, and with our operating of five elementary schools that are over one hundred years old. So we're hoping that the Lieutenant Governor will understand that our spending money on schools is just not going to places that according to the formula, will recognize as eating of benefit to schools. I mean, by nothing, everybody wants to be, um, to some resolution with the Lieutenant Governor's office, but I'm very hopeful that I'm showing good faith as we have shown in this schedule's budget, and keeping the cuts again to the non-salary side, and keeping everybody's job intact, representing the best budget we can to under the constraints of impulse by the next school spending formula. So I will be around, and I will be available to ask and answer questions if you'd like to address them to me, or to Karen, and then, uh, or to Bob, both favorably on the post budget for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing. For those wishing to speak in favor? I open the public hearing. For those wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing. For those wishing to speak in opposition? I close the public hearing. What is the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion made to approve, and seconded. At this point during discussion, councils are free to ask questions, and various members of the audience who gave you the list, we see that the superintendent is here as well, and I will be, this, I didn't identify two of our colleagues in government, School Committee Member, Bishop Capano, and School Committee Man, Rick Starbuck, who's also in the audience for us today, along with, any discussion with the council? Councilor, it's you.
Some of the discussions, um, I'm really, of course, yeah, the school budget, budget that, yeah, and, um, some of the others. Some air holes, uh, police talk, the fire, uh, trying to fear away from us closer to not in the mud, but it worked. Tried to fear away that we can increase, um, I mean, the DPDW. And look at a zillion different ways we're going there. But yet we do something that all the people in the budget that was meant to be there. Actually did a really good job. During such tough times in this city, uh, you know, we burn all the taxpayers off. But I also am more listening to what our student employees are giving to me. Actually, I look at the whole of the average, so the work is in the city taking place too. Going, I'm going in favor of it and in the past I have always supported the mayor and the budgets. They're all working together, doing a great job. That's what this is all about. All the city departments are working well with us. Just want to say, you know, good job.
Thank you, Counsel Seh. Any other discussion? Seeing none, if I, uh, if I may just make one brief statement among those lines as well, Counsel Seh, I think that there's department heads, the mayor, our CFO, for all the hard work it is putting together this document, the superintendent, our school committee, our school committee members as well, uh, who we are all faced with a very daunting task of trying to, um, fund the city and services in the, uh, in the way of, uh, in adequate funding. And what I would like to say in the forward for FY16 and beyond is that this council is committed to be working with the mayor and all the state agencies to increase our, um, our tax base. And that is truly the way, the only way that we are going to, um, find ourselves and have the conditions to pay for our schools, to pay for our grades, to pay for our police and fire, EDPW roles. I think it's going to take the entire city to make some hard decisions to make sure that we make, um, that we set forth the right plans to increase the tax base in the city of Lynn. Um, and that's not through increasing taxes, but that's, that's the way we're going to develop it. The council and the mayor put, um, my opinion, um, steadfast in, uh, wonderful job of setting Lynn up to be, uh, economically friendly to businesses and developers through some progressions. And we continue to always look at ways to increase, again, increase what we need to own, uh, tax revenues in the city of Lynn. So unless I see any further discussion, seeing none, Madam Clark, go call on the approval of the FY16 post-city budget, it's been proper.
Counsel Button?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kehoe?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano? Yes, Counsel Chakudis?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Flutti? Yes, Counsel Freyden? Yes, Counsel Seh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford? Yes, Counsel Lozey? Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Tan?
Yes.
Yes, and yes.
What's your carries? Public hearings to be set down?
There are two public hearings to be set down and I agree with each other if you'd like to separate them. We can do this.
No objection altogether. Thank you, Madam Clark.
Petition of National Group Raphael Pines for permission to install approximately 15 feet plus some lattice of two four-inch concrete encased conduits from existing Post 17 North Federal Street to the customer's private property to provide service to 47 North Federal Street. And petition of Islamic Society of Noshaw and Hake for permission for a sign permit at 35 North Hill Street.
Mr. President, council. So if you'll let me sit down, second impact, any discussion? Seeing none, all the papers say aye. All the members in the standup and then you sit down for, open the hearing.
I'm finished with this. We have nothing, um, committee reports. We have the education, environmental, business committee report and, uh, I can read that council order. Uh, order that the city control of the NSIBI authorized to appropriate the sum of $750,000 zero cents to the county free capture, the county Hickory Middle School should be determined. This transfers to fund a feasibility study into possible locations for the construction of the new Hickory Middle School. The ultimate construction of the new Hickory Middle School is contingent upon full funding of Massachusetts School Building Authority. It is understood that the Massachusetts School Building Authority may not treat cost incurred in conducting the feasibility study as reimbursable expense. It is specific intention of the city of Lynn that the city of Lynn will include the sum of $750,000 in any future bond out of fund the city share of construction cost to the new Hickory Middle School, said $750,000, which is to be included in reimbursement in any future bond out approved by the purpose of the city of Lynn, shall be charged to the city of Lynn, general fund to reimburse the city of Lynn in cost incurred as a result of the feasibility study.
Counsel Lozey?
President, the man who spoke with the committee to approve the motion.
Second motion has been made to approve a $750,000 appropriation of feasibility of the proposed new Hickory Middle School. I have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, go call.
Counsel Button?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kehoe?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano? Yes, Counsel Chakudis? Yes, Counsel Flutti? Yes, Counsel Freyden? Yes, Counsel Seh? Yes, Counsel Ford? Yes, Counsel Lozey? Yes, Counsel Net? Yes, Counsel Tan? Yes, and yes.
Counsel Lozey?
Here is Mr. President, motion for emergency.
Second made in seconds, especially seeing none, go call on the emergency.
Counsel Button?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kehoe?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano? Yes, Counsel Chakudis? Yes, Counsel Flutti? Yes, Counsel Freyden? Yes, Counsel Seh? Yes, Counsel Ford? Yes, Counsel Lozey? Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Tan?
Yes.
Yes, and yes.
Uh, the next, um, committee is the Government Administration Committee and there's a motion to set down a public hearing for the full council on a proposed order to reorganize the office of the city solicitor.
Counsel what it is?
Mr. President, uh, the motion was made by the committee to sell out for a public hearing.
Motion made, second, second, any discussion? All the papers say aye. Aye, aye, no, the ayes have it. A public hearing will be scheduled.
Uh, basically you have several orders?
If there's no objection, we'll take them all at once. Please emergency as well.
Right. Order that the city control of the NSIBI authorized to take the following actions. Certifiers available fund the amount of $1,217,700 zero cents as allotted to the city of Lynn by the Massachusetts School Building Authority. These funds are to be used for the roof repair of the Narson Elementary School. Certifiers available fund the amount of $604,000 zero cents as allotted to the city of Lynn by the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And these funds are to be used for the roof repair of the Hickory Elementary School. Certifiers available fund the amount of $170,000 zero cents as allotted to the city when helped to qualify the public help to fund the fiscal year 16 backup grant. Grant period number 115 to 6316. Certifiers available fund the amount of $1,487,500 zero cents as allotted to the city when helped to qualify the public help to fund the fiscal year 16 convention wellness trust fund grant program. Grant period number 115 to 6316. Certifiers available fund the amount of $76,994 zero cents as allotted to the city when helped to qualify the executive office of public human services to fund a grant amendment for fiscal year 15, safe and successful youth initiative grant. Grant period 513, 15 to 9315. Transfer the sum of $48,000 zero cents from ISD payroll to street light expense. Transfer the sum of $55,000 zero cents from ISD payroll to ISD expense. Transfer the sum of $100 zero cents from the reserve account to the ISD payroll account. And transfer the sum of $174,135 from the workers' comp payroll and reserve to the VICA expense.
Counsel Button? The man who spoke with the committee motion.
Second.
Made to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, go call.
Counsel Button?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kehoe?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano? Yes, Counsel Chakudis? Yes, Counsel Flutti? Yes, Counsel Freyden? Yes, Counsel Seh? Yes, Counsel Ford? Yes, Counsel Lozey? Yes, Counsel Net? Yes, Counsel Tan? Yes, and yes.
Counsel Lozey has a first motion made for the first, second discussion, go call emergency.
Counsel Button?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kehoe?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano? Yes, Counsel Chakudis? Yes, Counsel Flutti?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Freyden?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh? Yes, Counsel Ford? Yes, Counsel Lozey? Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Tan? Yes, and yes. Licensee committee?
Counsel Tan?
And Lord Mary, motion motion.
Second, two, seven, all the papers say aye. All the papers say aye, both of them, aye, ayes have it.
And there is no license committee at all.
Any new business? Counsel Seh?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion. I would sit down for public hearing. I would be in the church for the pastor, my fourteen, eight, uh, on the thirteen, fourteen.
All the papers say aye, all the papers say aye, all the ayes have it. Any other one? Finish with these. Counsel Ford?
Two things, uh, my son's quite willing to say that brings all the councils welcome and of course why you are welcome to give a fight now, I speak with what money.
Counsel Ford is in front of the entire city. He's in front of the whole town.
Counsel.
Aye, Ford. Counsel Seh?
Thank you. I just want to say that a couple of weeks ago, the people were coming on stage over the Marshall Room School with the help of the housing, uh, that, I don't know, trying to point loads of trash out of there and help council from that. And Button, Robby Self, and Matt, Mark, and Brendan, I just want to say thank you. And also, July eighteen, I read all the glasses that be on the dumpster day. Extremely important, but everybody in the city knows what they have these days, sort of run trash. Also accepted TVs, I believe it is twenty-five dollar, uh, charge to drop those off and give it, you know, and other stuff we made in there.
So July eighteen, from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 2:50 Commercial Street, there will be dumpster day. Information on the EDPW website as to what is, uh, what can be brought and what cannot be disposed of and the cost associated. Thank you, Counsel Seh. Feel free to share on Twitter, Facebook, and a lot. Any other new business, old business? Seeing none, wish everyone a happy and safe for what we arrive. All the things that are in center, all the things that the ayes have it, we are.